All right, good evening. Welcome to the planning board meeting. We'll start with your call. Larry Barber. Chris Delatello. Suzanne Lovekis Akora. And Mel Hestenada.
Here.
Bob Cardika.
Here.
George Shiddid.
Here.
John Petrellino. Dale Bickers.
Here.
Eli Ticechko. Jeff Trump.
Here.
Thank you. The public announcement, please. I can't believe after all this year, nobody remembers that.
I was gonna tell you.
It's been a few months since we met. There goes a lot of practice. All right. The public announcement, please. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Oklahoma Public Meetings Act have been complied with and satisfied and that the annual notice, which gave sufficient notice of the time, place, and conduct of all public meetings in the full of the planning board of the City of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk and placed on an appropriate bulletin board at the lobby of City Hall, 78 Cedar Street, Brunswick, New Jersey, and have been transmitted to the official newspaper for the City of New Brunswick, Kansas, the home of New Jersey, and its heartland. Thank you very much. You can all stand and salute with that.
.............................................
Thank you. It's my understanding that the meeting from the A-Go meet, the minutes from the A-Go meeting have not been... I haven't completed today, but I didn't think it was sufficient time for everyone to review them, so we'll just postpone them for the next meeting.
Very good. Thank you, Dan. So now we'll move on to our public hearing for tonight. The application is 25 French Street slash 150 Somerset. This is RWJ Barnabas. Health, South Building Expansion, P D 2019-04. Primary Final Major Site Plan Application for the Expansion of Existing Medical Building. 2015 RWJ Core and South Building Expansion Located at 1 Robert Wood Johnson Place, Lot 24.01, Lot 1.01.
Good evening. Lisa Johnboss with Love Firm Keys, a Shekinian, and Jantumasty. On behalf of the applicant, as stated by the chair tonight, the applicant is seeking primary final site plan approval for some interior renovations and a modest expansion to its south building located on his campus within New Brunswick. Angela here in greater detail from our architect tonight. Many of the upgrades that are proposed within the building is to right-size the current operations to accommodate state-of-the-art technology related to the ORs that are operating within the building today. To discuss the application tonight, we intend to call two witnesses, Dan Disario, who's our site, project site engineer, as well as Adam Ferrari, who is our architect for the project. I should also state that in connection with this application, there's no variances or waivers that are required or needed in connection with this application, so it is an ad verite application. With that, I'd like to call out first witness.
Please state your name, spell your last name.
Certainly, Dan Disario, D-I-S-A-R-I-O.
These two are, want to tell the whole truth or nothing about the truth?
I do.
You may proceed.
Thank you.
Dan, were you previously certified towards working capacity as a civil engineer?
Not as a civil engineer, but as a traffic engineer.
Are you a licensed civil engineer in the state of New Jersey?
I am.
I ask that you accept as an expert in civil engineering?
Qualification, yes. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, if you're a firm-minded engineering, was a site engineer to prepare the site plans that were submitted to the board in the instance tonight's hearing, is that correct?
That is correct.
If you could, I'd ask that you go through the proposed modifications to the building and the site.
Sure. Mark is A-1. A-1. Exhibit A-1 is aerial plan indicating the subject site. It is dated August 12, 2019, and it was prepared by our office. The purpose of this exhibit is to orient the board to the specific site for the project that's before you this evening. French Street is basically running from the lower left to the upper right. I'm going to call Plan North straight up. So French Street is really Route 27, our south road for purposes of my testimony, and I call East of that. So French Street's to the south of the subject site. The subject site is slightly east of the intersection of Patterson Street with French Street. This board actually had granted an approval previously, a couple of years ago, for this site, and the applicant has elected to make some modifications to what's being proposed as it relates to the building. You'll hear more from the architect, but the purpose of this application is to modernize basically the surgical services of the hospital. Right now, the operating rooms are undersized. The applicant is looking to right-size them. In addition to making some modifications of existing building square footage, which would be about 60,000 square feet of existing building that's going to be modified, the applicant is also proposing a building expansion of 29, approximately 29,000 square feet. That building expansion will include three occupiable floors, and then the fourth floor would be essentially a medevac area for mechanicals. As it relates to site elements, there's really not much to this application. A-2, Martin?
A-2.
A-2 is a site plan rendering prepared by our office dated August 12, 2019. It's essentially just a color rendering of the site plan sheet that's in the package that was part of the site plan application. The site itself today has a curb cut along French Street, and it serves non-emergency ambulances, so they're called transport ambulances. So anyone with a non-emergency coming for testing that needs to be transported by an ambulance, they come to this area of the site today. The applicant's proposing to maintain that existing curb cut along French Street and is proposing five non-emergency ambulatory spaces for transport ambulances, as well as an overflow area for an additional three transport ambulances, if indeed those are ever needed. The building itself, the architect will get into this in more detail. A center will follow this dashed outline along French Street and come over the top of that existing surface parking lot. So when you're looking from the street, you're going to see a curb cut into the undersized, under, to the underside of a building on top of this parking area. Because of the common spacing that's required to hold up the building, there's an existing underground detention-based system that was put in a couple of years ago. That system needs to be relocated a little farther south. As it relates to landscaping, any non-sidewalk or paving areas are going to be stoned. And the reason why we can't put any vegetation is because all of this area will be under, the underside of the building. Too much shade, nothing's going to be able to grow. So any non-cement or paved areas will be stoned. As it relates to utilities, the intention is to connect to existing utilities that serve the hospital proper itself. So most of the utilities will be connections that will occur internally to the site, with the exception of water. A new water connection is proposed to come out approximately about the east of the side of the parking lot and come straight across French Street to make a new connection for water service. Otherwise, all of the utilities will be connected internally to the hospital site proper. We have received review letters from both Mr. Bignell's office as well as Mr. Carley's office. We take no exception with any of the comments or statements that have been raised with respect to those two review letters, and the applicant will comply with all comments as set forth in both of those review letters.
Just two follow-up questions. The proposed parking area today, that's in existing non-emergency ambulatory, ambulance parking areas, is that correct?
That is correct.
So it'll be the same operation that's there currently, just reconfigured?
Correct.
And the proposed use to expansion, the hospital use that's permitted within the zoning district for this, in the city of New Brunswick?
Yes, it is, and we seek no relief or design waivers for any zoning requirements.
Can you just clarify, I'm sorry. So the existing parking today is non-ambulatory? And it will remain?
Correct.
For transport ambulances only?
Correct, so it's for transport ambulances today?
Got it.
And it will continue to be for transport-only ambulances in the future?
Okay. Is there any signage that is located within, near the access point to allow vehicles to enter?
There is signage, and the architect can articulate what that signage is.
If you're looking for weight-stiking signs, there is signage that's proposed in connection with the civil drawings relating to stop signs and the like. Signage is proposed in connection with the addition to the hospital for an entrance sign.
Right. Yeah, I'm more concerned about non-hospital vehicles trying to enter there, just getting out busy.
The public will be alerted to the fact that it's for ambulance use. Great, thank you. You're welcome.
I have no further questions for this witness.
Thank you. Just a quick thing. In Mr. Bignell's letter indicates that there was no information was provided on lighting appliance. And we will comply with the city's requirements for lighting? I think his comment was really specific to the lighting of the parking area. Yeah. And that lighting will be handled by lighting on the underside of the building? We haven't detailed that lighting yet, but that will be part of the final architectural plan study.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next witness is Adam Ferrari, a stand-up architect.
Please state your name, spell your last name.
Adam Ferrari, F-E-R-R-A-R-I.
You swear or you want to tell the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
I do.
You may proceed.
Your license architect, is that correct?
I am.
In what state are your licenses?
In the state of Minnesota and Pennsylvania.
In advance of tonight's hearing, were you to prepare the architectural plan that was submitted to this board?
Was.
Since the witness is not qualified as, is not licensed in the state of New Jersey, is he be accepted as a fact witness for the purpose of this testimony tonight?
Yep.
Thank you. If you could, describe to the board the renovations and the proposed expansion that's proposed at this site, starting if you could with the interior of the site?
Sure. So as we explained, this is a surface parking lot, and it's kind of the last missing jigsaw puzzle piece of this existing south building. So right now, in this corner where this black triangle is, there's a staff-only entrance, and there's a staff-only entrance at this other black triangle. This is kind of the backside of the campus. It's mostly loading around this side, the power plant, and as we mentioned, this transport parking lot. So one of the goals of this project, since there's going to be some activity here, is to reorient things and to provide a more public entrance on French Street that's more obvious, intuitive, and in keeping with the urban design of the street. This entrance back here will maintain the staff-only entrance and not be used by the transport vehicles. As a result of this being now a new public entry, there's some modest renovations to this level to create a public lobby, to usher people in, and to direct them towards the elevators that'll get them networked into the rest of the hospital. The primary entrance for Robert Johnson University Hospital will continue to be on the underside. So this alleviates one of the issues, which is pedestrians wander into this area not knowing how to get in, and then have to walk all the way around the entire campus just to get the front door. So this will alleviate that issue. So moving up to the next level above, it's going to be Central Sterile Processing, which is a department that basically cleans the layers that go into the OR platform. There's two floors of this expansion that are Central Sterile Processing. One is a clean floor, and one is a dirty floor, and they're separated. They're sandwiching basically the ORs between them. The next level above is where the majority of the work is occurring, and that's to create a much easier planning module for, from a clinical perspective, to design the ORs in the hospital. Right-size them, bring them up to current modern technologies, and make them safe and appropriate for all surgical work. Support spaces for that surgery, staff lockers, offices, that sort of thing. Next level above then starts to get above the existing south building roof, and that's where the other floor of Central Sterile Processing exists, where the cleaning of the goods happens. And then a top floor, which is non-occupiable for the public, and it's electrical equipment and some HVAC equipment. It basically takes up this whole modest 8,000 square foot footprint. So the footprint of the project is 8,000 square feet multiplied by four floors, and a small portion that's infill in an adjacent building to create a continuous platform. So that's kind of a brief summary of the interior renovation scope and then the new construction and expansion scope.
You can move on then to the exterior of the building and talk about the field and the upgrades that are happening to the park facade as well as the architectural material issues for the expansion.
Sure. Before you get to that, Mr. Chairman, may I? As Mr. Ferrari has now been accepted by the board as an expert, certainly his testimony as to the effect of the proposed changes to the building and the purpose, for instance, I think it indicated that the additional entrance would be to alleviate or to be easier for the public to find. That would be an opinion that he's not, I know it's counterintuitive. If this hospital was in Pennsylvania, that opinion could be accepted, but since he's not licensed here in New Jersey, those types of opinions can't be accepted. Certainly, the board can give it whatever weight they feel they can.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
So I have this exhibit here.
Thank you.
Thank you. What you're seeing in this rendering from this side over is existing building. This is a building on the Robert Wood Johnson campus called the Core Building. Recently, within the last two years, you may have noticed in construction, it got this all-glass and metal top floor, vertical expansion, put on the building. And what that started to do is take a primarily brick masonry and stone facade that was on the campus of the time period when those buildings were built, and start to introduce more of the architectural materials around the rest of the campus. Metal panels, glass, and detailing that is similar to the rest of the campus. So we're borrowing a lot of that language that continues to work its way around the building. What you're seeing here, this glass portion here, is the four stories of additional space for the top of the parking lot. So it's basically stating that this is the infill. And there is a lower roof on either side of this portion that houses mechanical equipment, large air handling units, and evaporators and cooling towers, which we want to screen from public view. So this top line here is bringing a metal panel screen up to a point where you can no longer see that equipment, the south expansion roof, and then bringing that screen down in front of the existing building to the second level above the street at the head of the windows, and carries that line all the way through. This screen is also applied to this existing building, which is on the corner of Scott and French Street. It wraps the corner slightly and basically puts a period in the sentence. So this is more of a massing and a material view, and then this is an architectural rendering. A-4. On French Street. So this is the new public entrance that's being created. It has a modest canopy over the front with some signage. It's indeterminate at this point, but it would just be a small sign not to indicate that this is a front door, not to be confusing, but to provide some convenient access because there are staff and visitors who park in the Patterson that cross the street, and they will be waiting their way this way and now building that entrance right there. Underneath here is the parking lot. So this is the start of the new building, and the floor is above. And so there's a way in down there into the site plan layout that Dan illustrated before. This then all-glass facade on the south side is the new infill portion of the building. Four floors, including that mechanical penthouse, and then the mechanical, I'm sorry, the metal panel screen that wraps in front of the existing south building, high enough to cover the equipment. Another view from the opposite corner near the intersection. This will be A-5. The corner being the existing building, the existing power plant, which is a brick facade. So this metal panel veneer covers that, the new infill portion, the continuation of the metal panel over here, and then that's the seam where the existing adjacent building starts. And you can see that the top floor, that is the metal paneling glass that was already established. So an attempt was made to try to be consistent in terms of materiality for the new building and the cladding of the existing facades, to try to unify the campus. Also, this side of the campus faces city, and to try to present a stronger face to the city, to be a welcoming entry point if someone is on this side of the campus. This project really is addressing a number of those issues at the same time, while its primary focus is the OR platform and creating a better surgical environment from an urban design perspective and an exterior facade perspective is a lot of our goals.
Thank you. Just a quick clarification. The entrance side that is shown on one of the rendering, that's not necessarily part of this application. The signed permit will be submitted at the appropriate time?
Correct. All of the signage that's shown here is better visible in this rendering. Exhibit A-4, there will be some signage that's down at the street levels so someone can see where they're going. And again, as Dan alluded to, some signage that shows that the ambulance can park in there, but it's not for public parking. There's lots of examples of this type of sign on the campus right now, and it would be in compliance with the state of the province.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
So, Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, there's no signs proposed with this application? Those signs are just sort of called conceptual?
Correct.
In the future, there would be a forthcoming signage application for whatever particular signage and whatever it's going to be worth, is that?
That's correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Just a clarification. Are you using the term facade and screen interchangeably, or are they different? Or, I know that there's a facade on this new structure that you're building, and you're saying there's screens on both sides, are they just to cover what's behind it? So that's a screen?
Yes. It's a screen in front of the existing facades. Thanks. I'll pass for the turn now.
Further questions?
Thank you. That would conclude our conference of debate for this evening.
Anyone from the public who would like to comment on the application? There are none. Is there a proposed resolution?
Certainly. If the board acts favorably, the following conditions would be recommended.
If the board acts favorably, the following conditions would be recommended in compliance with the terms of the DNR engineering report dated June 19th, 2019. Submission of all necessary easements and cross-access agreements for review and approval by the board attorney and city engineer. Payment of a site performance bond in an amount reviewed and approved by the city engineer. Submission of a site construction escrow deposit for engineering inspection fees in an amount calculated pursuant to title on the city engineer. Payment of all outstanding sewer and water connection fees. Issues of a road opening permit if necessary from the city engineer. Compliance with the terms of the Big Now Planning Consultor Report dated June 7th, 2019. Planning will be best covered for all anticipated hopes of approval reviews. Payment of any other fees due to city and resident-related development or use of the project. Payment of any outstanding taxes, annual water or sewer fees. Middlesex County Planning Board approval or waiver. Freehold Soil Conservation Board approval or waiver. Submission of engineering plans to comply with any changes required by the planning or engineering memos or site or plan amendments all but at hearing. All utilities and other site improvements will be maintained by the applicant at their sole expense. All onsite utilities to be constructed underground. All temporary encroachments into the public rightway shall require city council approval. All construction staging shall be done onsite unless an encroachment allowed me to the public rightways approved by the city council. Streets shall be kept clean of sediment and debris. The applicant shall cause the streets to be cleared if directed to do so by the director of public works. Tracing patch shall be installed at all construction exits. Replacement of any damaged streets, curbs, and sidewalks as per the direction of the city engineer. There are no bulk barriers or waivers, and the application is for preliminary and final site plan approval.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any proposed additions or amendments? I just want to comment. I think the facade definitely enhances the street scape in this area. I think this is particularly a devoid section of very busy thoroughfare. Also, there's a train going by it. So, I think from an urban design perspective, I applaud your efforts and thank you for considering how the building will interact with the street. We have a motion.
Motion to accept the proposal.
With conditions?
With the conditions.
Gail Vickers?
Yes.
Manny Castaneda?
Yes.
Bob Cardika?
Yes.
George Stigged?
Yes.
Jeff Cron?
Yes. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. We appreciate your time.
The next item on tonight's agenda is the request to authorize a redevelopment study. This item will be tabled for further feedback from the planning department. We don't need any... I don't need to take any other action other than table. Very good. Moving on to item C. This is amendments to Title 16 of the Land Development Code. It's for the planning board review of the proposed amendments to the city's land development code. Do you have a presentation?
Not too much. We've... The city seeks to make some tweaks to Title 16, Land Development Code. In particular, you will all have a memo for you, hopefully, to distribute it. And so, first, we're going to tackle Title 16, Chapter 24, Section 080A. And here, we will be amending the definition of minor site plan to include the term "structure." Right now, it says "building," and there's some ambiguity occasionally as to what defines a building. And thus, to alleviate this issue, we are adding the language "structure." We propose to add the language of "structure" for production of ambiguity and clarity going forward. Secondly, Title 16, Chapter 24, Section 080A11. We would reduce the number of plans required for minor site plan from 19 to 12. We end up, even for these board meetings, we end up having to destroy, discard several plans. And for those meetings, the demands are even less so. And so, we'd like to formalize that applicants no longer have to provide full set of plans for those meetings. And finally, for Title 16, Chapter 16, Section 040C, we have been finding that the escrow that we collect to support the efforts of our board professionals have been low in that we are repeatedly going back to the applicants for more and more funds repeatedly. And as such, to reduce the amount of legwork on our end in time that we waste in collecting this and running the risk of not being able to fully pay the efforts of our board professionals, we would like to increase across the board 50% of those fees, whatever's left over, always as part of the applicant. And the amount outlaid by the applicant, at the end of the day, would be the same. It would just be less frequent that we would have to be going back to them for money. So, the amount that they spend won't change. It would just be a bigger lump of funds upfront to have fewer problems with that. And so, I asked the board for advice and consent to amend the land use ordinance.
Dan, any discussion?
You just proposed this to the board, provided a recommendation to the city council?
The city council referred it to the planning board at this Pusser Mary. So, it's referred to the board. The board would provide advice and consent. And if you were to act favorably, then the council would amend the ordinance at their next two meetings.
This has already been introduced on the first reading for the council? Part of the process?
No, we did it by resolution. So, first reading would be after this.
Okay.
Yes.
That's their process, that's all. So, if this is... There's always a planning board referral whenever the council considers making modifications to the zoning or land use ordinances. It always gets sent to the planning board for their comments. So, essentially, you'll be making your comments and your recommendations. You send it back to the council. The council can consider those sort of as the experts of zoning work and developers.
Are the fees, raising them by 50%, does this represent an adequate, based on your analysis, an adequate amount to cover?
So, we actually felt that perhaps we should go higher, but we also did not want to be... We didn't want to scare anyone. So, ultimately, we wanted to proceed at 50%. And a few years from now, when we are doing a new master plan, a new zoning ordinance wholesale, that we could review all of our fees wholesale and possibly increase them further than if needed. But 50% after we bounce our numbers around was sort of a conservative number that we landed on.
Yeah, that's sort of a real question in terms of raising this amount. Do you consider that to be something that people can handle in terms of...
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. The... The way the application is done, so smaller projects might be site plan exempt or have smaller site plan box checks. And so, the way the formulas are calculated, they would have already not significant costs. So, for example, a single or two-family house, if it were to come before one of the... Well, it would have to go to the zoning board, but it would have no escrow review required regardless. And smaller projects that don't have site plan would have to pay no escrow or $2,000. Well, in this case, it would become a $3,000 escrow. But for the larger projects, again, they are not... If at the end of the day, you end up having to pay $20,000 in escrow now, if we change this ordinance, they will still pay the $20,000. They will just... We will go back to them less frequently to ask for money. So, the amount that they paid at the end of the day is the same. It's just, instead of right now where from start to finish, we may have to ask the applicants for three times, we may have to ask for funds. This may change it to one or two times. Because we are actually seeing right now that before our review, before we go to our technical advisory committee with our reviews, we've already exhausted our escrow, probably about 50% of the time. And so, we would like to do that less often if possible.
Just a question about the process. This way you described of involving the planning board and the city council, is this typical of the... What you... The process you would involve for raising any fees?
Only land use and zoning fees.
Okay. Is there any other public notification involved, or is it just...
This is regular notice. I will have to publish it in the paper before the second day, before the second reading of the ordinance. But otherwise, unless... If it had amended the zoning that applied to a specific area or a specific zone, there would be additional notice requirements. But this is just a general notice for this requirement. Because this is sort of wholesale city law. Is this something that we take a formal vote on, or is it a...
For public comments, for comments only.
Okay.
The recommendations that the board may make will go to council in form of a letter from Dan.
Okay.
So, if you think it's okay, you can say so. If you think that it's tweaking in specific areas, then we'll put that in form of a letter that will go to council. Council will consider that.
Does anyone have any modifications or concerns about the proposed changes? I think we would recommend that this go to the city council.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hold on a minute. Should be over the public floor.
Do we have any public comment? Good, because I... I already wrote that. Move on to now, AMD on the agenda. Amendments to Title 17 of the zoning ordinance. This is for the planning board's review of the proposed amendments to the city's zoning ordinance, particularly the Title 17.
Yes. The city desires to amend our fee schedule for the zoning ordinance for our simple permits. One of the issues that we often have is that we will deny permit, and then several months later, after things have been filed away and they're physically just tucked away outside out of line, people come back with resubmissions. And right now, all resubmissions are at no cost. In fact, if you apply for something last year and were denied, you can come back this year and you can say, "Hey, I made the changes. That makes sense. Give me my permit," and we can't charge you anything for the time spent to re-review the changes proposed. Now, on the memo, you will see the second column, the existing permanent fees, which I believe do not be particularly onerous. And our proposed changes would have... Anyone would have 30 days after they receive their... After the letter, the date of the denial letter, to resubmit absolutely free of cost. Because 30 days is right now the point where we finally... We take the folders and we physically file them away and put them in our file room. And then after that, these numbers in the final column reflect exactly 60% of the initial fee. And it's done so, you know, these resubmissions, in all honesty, take notably more time than the initial reviews. But I don't think it would be particularly fair to charge more for a resubmission review. Particularly, you end up creating perverse incentives. And so, the resubmission re-review fee should be less than the initial fee. But it should reflect the fact that there are additional costs and time burdens by the city to do these reviews past 30 days out.
So, your statement here in the second paragraph, is this a type of letter firmly the city in New Brunswick does not?
Yes, it should say does not charge. I apologize.
Okay.
It do not charge for zoning permit resubmissions or for these planned resubmissions for that matter. But we're not including that in this discussion.
And this is... For this fee increase, is the same process that you stated earlier?
Correct.
My only thought, questions, especially with this single and two-family residential structures. What I don't want to happen is for people to not make upgrades to their properties because of additional costs. And I don't think that would be the case, but we do have many low-income residents within the city. And I don't want to create a disincentive for low-income families to not improve their properties. That would be my only... My only thought. I, you know, I have no problem. I don't think the cost would be material to... Property and houses of worship and nonprofit agencies. I don't see it being material for multifamily building owners. I just want to be mindful of how this could potentially impact particularly property owners and low-income homeowners.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I think the issue that the board deals with, and I'm not there every day to experience it, but my sense of it is that it's really not an issue of making sure that, you know, of increasing the fee for the same, which is charging something. I think it's what happens with applications. We come in and, just to give you an example, you know, someone makes that patient for a, say, a 400-square-foot sign, right? His zoning order says maximum sign area is...
Right, 200 square feet.
Right? So, the process the city goes through is they'll automatically deny it because they have to, because the zoning order doesn't permit it. And then sometimes, these things are out there for months or even years before someone decides to, well, am I going to decrease the size of the sign? Or am I going to move the fence over, move the building over, or move the whatever, the structure over?
Mm-hmm.
So, I think this sort of encourages those applicants to sort of decide what they're going to do and proceed with it sort of in a timely way so that it's not out there hanging sort of indefinitely. Because sometimes the denials go out. We don't know if they're going to ever come back.
Mm-hmm.
Here, 400 square foot sign got denied. So, at least it's like, listen, you have, you know, the time period and the 30 days. It's sort of like a, you know, incentive to say, "Please resubmit whatever you're going to do. Please get it back to us within 30 days so we can at least review it, keep the file open, or go internally to just close that file off. And then if you want to resubmit for something else, you know, a year down the road, we'll accept it as a new application." Just for our own sort of sanity to maintain files that are active versus files that are sort of can be put away.
And I totally... I have no problem with this for the most part. I'm thinking about somebody puts on a new stairs in the back of their house, right, when they're maybe extending the stairs by a few feet. Would it be possible for the single... Just for single and two-family to do a 60-day? I'm just trying to... I really am trying to just be sensitive to one particular class in here and give them a little bit more leeway, knowing that they're not professionals likely. They're not involved in the business of owning assets in the state. Would there be any... Would we want to give them any special consideration? And just a... It's really just a question and thought rather than... Feel free to put it back, Dan. Tell me your answer to the issue.
I would think department-wide, whatever the day period is, we'd best have it be consistent for everybody. So, if you're considering 60 days, I don't know if you'd consider just making it 60 days for it so that it's not...
It's about...
Yeah, just easier for the staff, easier for everyone. Just have a simplified sort of process, whatever it happens to be. And again, what you see before you is the council has...
Referring.
Referring to the board. So, really, if you want to propose a change, you would specify what, you know...